Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 2014 Fresno County Supervisors Forum. My name is Ryan Jacobson, the CEO of the Fresno County Farm Bureau, and I appreciate all of you attending tonight, as well as those of you who are watching at home or on your computers. I want to begin with thanking tonight's sponsors of tonight's evening. We begin with the Fresno Bee, CMAC, the Fresno County Farm Bureau, and a big appreciation to Fresno City College for the use of their building tonight. I want to go through the introduction of our candidates who we have in presence with us. We are doing District Numbers 1 and 4, and I will begin with District 1. District 1 is located in western Fresno County and includes the cities of Fresno, Mendota, Fireball, San Joaquin, and Kermin. Immediately to my right, I have Mr. Blong Jong, the first candidate, and next to him, I have Mr. Brian Pacheco. And then I'm going to go over to District 4, over on my far-right side. District 4 is located actually on the southern part and western parts of the county. It's the east of Orange Cove over to Kalinga. The district encompasses nine of the 15 cities in the county. Next to Bill here, we have Buddy Mendez from Riverdale, and next to him, we have Danny Parra from Fowler. Thank you all for attending this evening. And next, I want to introduce our moderator for the evening. With us, we are very fortunate to have Mr. Bill McEwen. Bill is with the Fresno Bee. He currently serves as the editorial page editor for the Fresno Bee and has been with the newspaper since 1980 and has extensive experience covering government and politics. Bill?
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, candidates. And the people that you see on the stage here tonight, they had crowded races in the primary, and they're the candidates that emerged. The Bee has interviewed all the candidates, and we feel this is a stellar field and will really help the Board of Supervisors in the future and help our county here. And the way we're going to begin tonight is with opening statements from each of the candidates, and they have two minutes each. And we're going to start with Brian Pacheco. But first, Brian, I have a question for you. If you're elected, what will you do to solve the parking problem at Fresno City College?
Well, that's a tough one, especially when they told us it all have passes for us and it'd be pretty easy, and when you get here, you find your own, and it felt just like I was back in college again, except a good thing, I was an hour early, so I was able to find a parking spot.
Well, very good. So let's start with your opening statement.
Well, thank you. I'm Brian Pacheco. I'm 46 years old, and I'm a fourth-generation resident of the district. I'm a businessman, a school trustee, and a family farmer. I've devoted over a decade of my life with the education of our schoolchildren. Education is vitally important to us, and I know through a good education, we can all raise ourselves up. Vocational education and apprenticeship programs are also very important to me because I know while we provide a quality education for them to go to college, not everyone chooses to do that, and they need a good outlet where they can have a good job and have a good living for their families. In addition, public safety is very, very important to me, and I've made a pledge to give law enforcement all the tools necessary that they need because I believe we all need to feel safe in our homes, and that's why I'm very pleased to have the endorsement of Sheriff Memes, the Fresno Deputy Sheriff's Association, and many, many law enforcement agencies throughout the county. And lastly, as a fourth-generation family farmer, I know the importance agriculture plays in our community and the vital importance that water is tied with that. And that, again, gives me great pleasure that I am supported by the California Farm Bureau because they know I will be an advocate for water in our valley because not only the landowners, but the workers and all the service industries that are associated with agriculture are vitally important to us. I have a strong bipartisan support in this race. I look forward to the questions tonight so you get to know me and my opponent, and I believe you'll see a dramatic difference between the two of us, and then you'll be able to make an informed decision as to who you want to best represent you and be an advocate on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. And Blong, outline what your goals are and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Oh, I thought you were going to ask me about the parking situation again. Good evening, folks, and thank you so much for being here tonight. I can't even imagine 40 years ago, coming to this country as a refugee, as an immigrant, that I would have an opportunity to sit up here. You know, our first stop when we came to this country, for our parents when we settled in, was first to find a plot of land to farm. That's what connected us to our community. That's what connected us to what we do in the old country. But to come here, have an opportunity for education, to graduate from high school, college, earn MBA, to help my family start a small business, and then to work at the Public Defender's Office as an investigator, and have opportunity to serve the community as a community organizer with Fresno Center for New Americans, to help immigrants, refugees, new Americans, to make sure that they live well in this country, and then to humbly be elected, to serve the largest city in the Central Valley, the fifth in the state, I mean, to have that opportunity to govern, folks, and I've been blessed that I have an opportunity to govern for this long and to have bipartisan because I've worked hard to represent our community, to make sure that I represent the diversity that is our community. And I look forward to this evening, to really talk about our experience and to really talk about what we do here to move our community forward, whether those issues that have to be water, with jobs, with education, those are dear and important to me, and I spent a lifetime advocating for those, to make sure that they're there for everyone that has an opportunity to be in this country. Thank you so much, and I'm looking forward to make sure that I get your support.
Thank you. And we're going to turn to District 4 now, and I'll point out all of the men here on this stage. They've all run campaigns before. They're all elected officials and bring a lot of experience to offer a lot of experience to the voters of Fresno County. And we'll start now with an opening statement from Buddy Mendez.
Yes, I'm Buddy Mendez, and I'd like to thank all the sponsors for putting this on today. I've been, I'm 58 years old. I've been married to my wife, Leslie, for 37 years. We have three boys, and we have five grandchildren. And when, I farm 1,800 acres with my boys. My boys are in their early 30s. They have plenty of experience to run our farming operation, and that'll give me time to concentrate on the county board. Let me tell you things I've done. I've been on the Riverdale Unified School Board for over 20 years. I've been on the Southwest Transportation Board, the Public Utility Board, and West Island GIN. It's a cooperative gin with two gins, and I've been on all those, all at over 18 years. I've been solving problems in Fresno County for 20 years. Riverdale Unified is, has one of the highest graduation rates and is one of the highest-scoring Hispanic-majority schools in the state of California that's not a magnet school. We also have the highest percentage reserves of any school district in Fresno County. Like I said, I've been solving problems for 20 years. One of the things that I do, I farm in both Westlands and two Kings River units, so I have over 30 years of experience with both east and west-side water, and I'm very familiar with groundwater. Because of where I farm, I farm in different areas, and the groundwater situation's different. And I appreciate your support.
Danny Parra, how are you doing tonight?
Fine, thank you.
You have two minutes to tell us a little bit about yourself, your goals, experiences.
Thank you. I would like to thank the Fresno County Farm Bureau, the Fresno Bee, and all of you for being here tonight. My name is Daniel Parra. I was born and raised in the city of Parlier with my six siblings. When I was 19, I went to the Air Force. When I returned home, I moved to Fowler, and I've lived there for 24 years. During those 24 years, I went back to school and I got my bachelor's degree. Then I went on to get my master's in public administration. In 2004, I was appointed to the planning commission, and I enjoyed my work there, but it wasn't enough. So in 2008, I ran for city council and was elected. During my six years in city council, I've been fighting for water, not only at the local level, but at the state and the federal level also. During those six years, we balanced our budget every year. We did not lay off one person during this economic downturn. We helped revitalize our downtown by offering a facade program where we would pay $25,000 through a grant program for the front of the building, as long as the business owner upgraded the inside to ADA compliant. Along the way, we encouraged businesses to come in by offering a revolving loan program. We offered $35,000, but there was a catch. For every $35,000 we loaned, you had to do one local hire. As a result, we created 60 local downtown jobs and 750 jobs citywide. I also belong on a couple of boards. One of them is the Fresno EOC with a $100 million budget, and the California League of Cities with a $14.9 million budget. I have the knowledge, the experience, and the expertise to help lead this county forward. Thank you.
Very good. So we've heard the opening statements from the candidates. Now we get more into the debate format. And what happens here, this is my job, if one of the candidates raises an issue and puts the other candidate on the defensive, I'll provide time for the other candidate to respond, and we'll get a little back-and-forth going here. And gentlemen, if you start to filibuster, I'll just kind of go like that, and hopefully you'll respond and cut it off at that point. We want everybody to have a chance to address the issues tonight. And we're going to stay with Danny Parra now, and Danny, you get one minute to tell voters how you differ from Buddy Mendez.
I differ because of the work that I've done with my city council. I've worked with the police department, which is very important. You need to know how to work with a PD, especially when you're working with the sheriff's department. You don't want to make any mistakes, especially with the budget, because if you lose public safety, you're going to endanger lives. The work that I've done with my downtown, the revitalization, the programs that I've had access to, and the knowledge that I've gained are some of the reasons why I have the knowledge and I should be in this.
And Buddy, how about you? How do you differ from Danny?
Well, for starters, I'm a farmer, and this whole economy is based on ag. Now Danny said he's out fighting for water, but I've had 30 years of experience knowing the difference between our east-side and west-side water. Also, I've been endorsed by the sheriff's department, by Margaret Memes, our sheriff, who believes that I understand about public safety, have a broad view of public safety. I'm also supported by many, many farmers who feel that it's very important to have a farmer, an actual farmer, sit on the Board of Supervisors. I've also ran a city. Riverdale's an unincorporated city, but it has a fire department. And I've been involved in that for over, almost 20 years now. So there's a lot of differences here. I think I have the broad experience and way more experience.
Thank you. And we're going to go to District 1 now, and Blong, you get to lead off on this question. How do you differ from your opponent in this race?
Thank you. And you're right, there is a big difference, and we're talking about governance, folks. And governance here is having an opportunity to govern the city of Fresno, of 500,000 folks. That is dealing with half of the population of this county with a pretty similar budget, dealing with an issue that just doesn't impact the city of Fresno, but really throughout the entire Central Valley. When we talk about infrastructure, when we talk about mitigation area issues, the city of Fresno has that huge of a footprint that we're talking about. And so we've had to work collectively with the cities. I work with the mayors in Madera, I'm sorry, in Kermin, in San Joaquin, and also in Fireball and Mendota, to make sure that we move our community forward together. It's that level of experience for eight years. And again, the governance side is so huge, it's so big, that I think you look at the experience clearly in terms of the issues that we're talking about, whether we have to deal with water. I've worked with that issue with our folks, had a chance to walk with them and did the work. So my time is up, but thank you very much.
Brian, you know the question. How do you differ from your opponent?
Well, I think my opponent said it well, is he comes from the government sector, and he's been there for eight years. I come from the private sector, and it's all about money and budgets. When I was first elected to Kermin Unified School District, they were in financial trouble. And I took my private experience, shored up the budget, and that is real-world experience there. And you've got to apply that to the larger scale now. And from there, I've served nine years on a bank board to learn finances in and out because no matter what we do in governance, if we can't afford to pay the bills, we're in trouble. So from there, at a very young age, I just stepped down this past May as chairman of California Dairy, Inc., which is a $4 billion company. That's over double the size of our county budget, and we led that organization through some very, very difficult times over the last financial crisis. So that's how I really differ from my opponent, is I bring practical, real-world experience and not government solutions. I bring practical, real-world experience, and I have a proven track record for getting things done. And that's how we do it in the private sector.
Thank you. Buddy Mendez, you lead off this round, and again, we're going to allow a little more time. We want to explore your knowledge of the district, and the question is this: What is the number-one issue facing District 4 that you will have control over as a supervisor? So candidates, let's not stray off into other things. Let's focus on things that are directly under the control of the Board of Supervisors. And again, Buddy, you have 90 seconds on this.
Okay, the obvious one is the justice system. You know, the county still is in control of the budget, of the sheriff's department, the jail, and the peripheries of the justice system with the judges. So that's probably the number-one roads. The 4th district has the most roads. Fresno County has the most roads in the state of county roads, and the 4th district has the most roads in Fresno County. Water's still a big deal, you know, and there's a lot that the supervisor actually can do with water, whether it be no water, too much water, especially in the too-much water, especially if the supervisor has vast knowledge about floodwater, and also clean drinking water. I think the supervisors do have influence over that and can make a difference with that. So those are the main ones.
Thank you. And Danny, you'll note that Buddy listed three things. It'll be your choice if you want to focus on the number-one thing facing the district or if you want to add a couple more.
No, I kind of agree. I mean, we have issues with the jail. For one, it's overcrowded, and it's due to the fact that we do not have the manpower or the money to put these folks to trial. So we're keeping criminals that belong on the state level. So we need to find a way to reallocate money so that we can get the prosecutors, the defenders, and the sheriffs, they have money that they need, so that we can get these people to court and put them where they belong instead of keeping them on our jail and releasing them early. Economic development is very big. We are the number-one ag. Well, not this, the thing's too lary overtook us, but we are agricultural. So we need to find a way to diversify our job force. We have double-digit unemployment rate. We're in the middle of a drought. There's no precipitation coming now, from what I understand, very little to none before December. So we've got to find a way to diversify our workforce, bring value-added jobs over here, whether it be processing, distributing, or manufacturing. We've got to work with water. We need to work with our local water institutions to work with these new bills that the governor's coming up with. Unfortunately, he did bring that to us, but I'd rather it would have waited a little longer and been vetted out more. But we do have local control right now, so we're going to have to work with our local agencies to make sure that we get some kind of a water management plan, because if we don't, the state's going to take over and enforce it on us.
Thank you. And we're going to start off with Brian Pacheco on this. What's the number-one issue facing your district that you will have control over as a supervisor?
Well, Bill, I generally am the type of person that I like to follow the rules, but I think my colleagues in District 4 had it right. I don't think there is just one issue. The number-one issue is water, but as a supervisor, I don't have direct control up to that. That's mother nature and the good Lord above, and has direct control over that. But what I can control as a supervisor, again, relates back to the budget. Because it doesn't matter if you're in the social services, the jail, all those other issues, it all comes down to money and the budget. We need to keep our officers on the streets. We need to fully fund the DA's office. The public defender's office has been in dire need. They need an infusion of cash. And again, it all comes back to something that I can't control, and that's water, because our tax base is ag-driven, and water is the lifeblood that drives our tax base. So if I had to say one particular issue, it would just be the budget, my expertise in the budget, to go through it with a fine-tooth comb and look for areas of money that we can be more efficient on and put those areas to good use to really maximize our dollars that we do in the private sector.
Blong, you get a chance to tackle this one in 90 seconds.
Thank you. And I do agree that this is not a one-answer solution, but I'll tell you what the county does control, and we've touched a little bit on the public safety side. And we've touched about the 67% I heard there this morning, the state of the county, or even the 70%, depending where we are, about the inefficiency of where we, with the beds, what we're doing with the board, the additional public defenders and district attorneys, but also the pre-trial sentencing side of it, to make sure that we're moving. That's where the bottleneck is happening. And so we have to definitely invest in that to make sure that we move our folks out of that system where the beds are being utilized, what it's supposed to be utilized. That's a big piece of our public safety issue. But the other one, folks, it's really land use as well. Land use is so important because it affects our community. When we talk about water, it affects how we grow, how we want to manage our water, how we want to manage our community, the roads that we're talking about. Land use is such a big piece of what the Board of Supervisor does. And we're talking about the general plan here, extremely important of what we need to do and how that gets rolled out, that we need to be able to follow and make sure that we manage the right property for our community and for the growth of this particular community. And those are just some of the important things that the Board of Supervisors can do and should do. But ultimately, the most important thing, we're talking about budget and people, folks. Governance is about people. And when we talk about people, the county is the social safety net of all of us here in this county. That's people. It's not about dollars. It's about people. County has a huge, huge responsibility in terms of making sure that all of our residents are in the best shape of their life.
So an issue that's been out there nationally, at the state level, at the local level, since, for a long time, but especially since 2008, has been the health care issue. And the Fresno County Board of Supervisors voted not to really participate in the rollout of what's popularly called Obamacare. And we've had the issue recently about health care access for undocumented residents of our county. So Blong, this is a 60-second question. I know that's pretty tight, but give us how you would address the health care issue at the board level.
Well, I've disagreed with the board's decision in terms of the $20 million that they should have taken from the ACA to help move and transition our community. Without taking that, you can see that our community is already behind in making sure that all of our residents have an opportunity to get into the proper health care that they need. And in terms of the MISP, I believe that's what we're talking about. Well, I, with my partners and with our elected Latinos community, when they asked me to come and join them in a press conference and to say that, please, board, do not cut this needed package for our community here, especially for the most need, I was there and I joined them, and that's making sure that I'm there upfront, fighting and advocating, folks. Now, my opponent, he says that he's also opposed to it, but I think he had a better opportunity sitting on that community board in a public setting to really say out loud where his position is. Thank you.
Brian, you need me to repeat the question or you just want to tackle it?
No, I got it. And I think I do. I have a unique vantage point on this because for the last nine years, I was appointed by the county to be one of their four representatives on the Board of Community Medical Centers. So I have a unique perspective on this. And for the $23 million that the county has given community medical centers over the last number of years since 1995, they have received $82 million worth of services for those neediest in our community. And to me, it doesn't take a real smart businessman to figure out, but for $23 million, you're getting $82 million worth of services, and that is a great deal. The problem that the county got themselves into is that because it was such a great deal and at a fixed cost, they weren't entitled for any additional money for that. So as the Obamacare came and the MISP and the formula changed, the county is short $6 million. And so the county made a decision to end their contract with community medical centers and put everyone, in my opinion, in a real difficult situation. Again, being the financial expert that I am, I would have tried to find that $6 million because, again, for that extra $6 million, you're getting $82 million of services for those most needy in our community, and I think if I were on the board, I could have helped with my colleagues find a way to do that.
And Brian went a little over time there. Anything come up that you want to address, let's say, in 15 seconds or 20 seconds?
As I said, I think my opponent had an opportunity to publicly address the MISP issue, and he chose to, or I must have missed the public participation, making sure that he openly opposed that decision that the board took.
Okay, same question now for the District 4 candidates, and we're going to start with Danny Parra. Danny, how would you address health care if you were elected to the Board of Supervisors?
Well, again, I agree. The board made a mistake in not taking the money, so we'll leave it at that. I'll address MISP a little bit more. Ag, number-one industry in the county, making money. And when it comes to their workforce, which is 90% undocumented, they had an opportunity to take care of them, and they didn't. It's a shame. Morally, it's the right thing to do. So if I'm elected, I'm going to fight really hard to get it back on there and put it back in. Thank you.
And Buddy, you're a farmer, so you know how important labor is to the industry, and you know how important it is to have workers that are healthy, and the importance of healthy people in our community is good for all of the community.
Yeah, I think Brian had a point that I think the county needed to look for that $6 million to take care of that and to get it. I mean, it was a heck of a deal when you, for $23 million, you get over $80 million worth of service. So I think the county needed to look at that a little bit closer. I think it's kind of part of everything that's been going on in the state. The state mandates the counties to do certain things, and a lot of times doesn't want to fund them, and I think that needs to be changed. Of course, my party's not in control of the legislature like these guys' party is, but I think opposed to that, you know, I just had to throw that dig in, Bill.
Well, you're looking right at me, so I didn't know I'm running the state of California.
Yeah.
And I'll remind you, there's a saying that trouble runs downhill.
Right, right. Also, you know, Brian's got cows. He understands that same concept. We have another deal about what runs downhill. But I think it's very important. We need good health for our workers, and we need to get that fixed and changed.
Well, it sounds like whoever's elected, there's going to be a new attitude in regard to the MISP issue at the Board of Supervisors. Personal opinion here, that's a good thing. Buddy, you're going to stay on the hot spot, and very conveniently with the way we've put these questions together, and this one's 90-second answer. How do you assess the current board's performance in general, and what will you do differently than the incumbent who is terming out?
Actually, you know, I'm not running against the incumbent, and I'm not running against anybody that's on the board right now. You know, that's an obvious deal. And I think we are going to be, there's going to be a different attitude on the board regardless who gets elected. There's going to be a little change. But I think all in all, the board has done a good job. They've done a good job with the budget. I don't agree with everything they've done, but sometimes the county's kind of like a giant ship, you know, and it was kind of laid over, and now it's upright, and it's actually moving in a forward position. So, you know, all in all, I hope that if you're going to look at my predecessor, I hope I can, I work as hard and can get the work out. My predecessor was not afraid of the word "work." Sometimes the word "work" is considered a four-letter word to some people, but she was a very hard worker, and I didn't always agree with her, but she always researched everything she ever voted on.
Danny Parra, how would you assess the board's overall performance, and what would you, might you do differently?
Well, overall, it's been good. They do tend to get stuck on some subjects sometimes, such as first five, so I think they need to work with that, and I think they had a lawsuit with the city. So they need to be careful. I don't agree with the vote that they took on the high-speed rail for the simple fact that it was a meaningless vote. It did nothing. Two days later, the state came back and pretty much ruled that way also, said the budget was, the plan was good. And as a result, it put in jeopardy a maintenance facility that could have, that can bring 1,500 new jobs to the valley. And they told me that themselves when I spoke with them. So their past records show that, you know, we lost UC Merced, we lost Valley Children's, and I sure hope we don't lose the maintenance facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go on with the same question here for our District 1 candidates, and on this one, we'll start with And on this one, we'll start with Brian Pacheco. How would you rate the board's performance, and how might you differ from the person that occupies the seat now?
I think that the current board financially has done a really good job. They've been in very difficult financial trouble, and this current board has really righted the ship, as Mr. Mendez said, and they've done a great job financially. My immediate predecessor, I have the utmost respect for, Supervisor Larson, he's a decent, honest, hard-working man, and I hope to follow in those footsteps like that and be of that same mold. Where I would differ, and I am, am my own person, is that I disagree with taking a pay raise without the rank and file being made whole from the cuts that they could. So if I had any, any criticism, that's how I'm different than my predecessor. But where the county is different than the city of Fresno, the county has had two upgrades in their bond rating status, and my opponent, who's had direct control over that, the city, has had two downgrades, and financials in a bit of a financial trouble due to that. So that's how I would be different and to my predecessor.
Blong, you have an opportunity to respond to that and also give your assessment of the board.
Thank you very much. You know, as fellow colleagues, there is no doubt that I appreciate the tough decisions that we've had to make in the last seven years here. You know, and a budget dislodge, and a population that we've had to do with, with the workforce that we've had to do. So there, you know, to make those decisions, to get us through what we need to get through, especially within the city of Fresno here, where we were written up as to be in bankrupt and all those tough, difficult decisions, and now to be cleared of investment. Those are tough decisions that have to be made. But also, I think we miss some opportunities as well. You know, where we're talking about our healthcare for our folks, I think those are missed opportunities. Even if we were in those tough decisions, we have a responsibility to our community to make sure that they're healthy. I think we missed that. And I think we missed an opportunity to make sure that we reinvest the general plan again. That's something that needs to be looked at. It hasn't been updated for over 14 years. We haven't had an annual update for the, since 2003. That's our guiding blueprint. We need to make sure that we go back, do, do we, were we able to do what we say we were able to do? I think those are things, but ultimately, I believe that it is about the relationship between the city of Fresno. And I think that is extremely important for us to make sure that we understand what that means, that to have the two largest government entity not being able to work well together does no good for residents of this city. That's why I would reach out, be more proactive, be more engaging, to make sure that relationship gets fixed as soon as possible.
So I notice candidates a little reluctance to criticize the current board, so they may have trouble with this next question. And we'll stick with Blong. The way our format's set up, evaluate the performance of the current county administrative officer. And if you were on the board, would you have given him a raise when rank and file is receiving pay cuts?
Well, I'm going to have to go with my colleague over here in terms of that. I think that in terms of the rank and file, we made those tough decisions, if they made the tough decisions in terms of the rank and file, and then to go around and says management gets a raise. I'm not sure how that builds the type of relationship that we need from our community and from our workers, because they represent us when they're working for us here at the county or at the city. And you want to say that we all share in the same thing, we all share in the same path, and we preach that we must work together, we're taking the cuts together. Well, for the first chance we have an opportunity and that we make that, that does not bode well for what we expect from our, as they say, the frontline folks. Folks, I've worked for, for, for a city that serves so many people, 500,000 folks, and our frontline folks makes us elected look good. Bottom line. We can sit up and say what we need to do, but it is our frontline folks that has to deal with the day-to-day stuff, have to deal with the complaints, have to deal with the call-ins, have to deal with the business bottleneck that we have, and they make it work. We have to understand that it's the frontline folks that matters, that makes our county and makes our city run.
Brian, again, we'd like you to evaluate the performance of the current county administrative officer, address the raise question.
Well, I think I did a little bit of that in my previous question. And again, at the Kerman Unified School District, as a board member for the last 12 years, I can say that we have never given management a raise without giving an equal raise to the rank and file. And I would apply that same concept to the county board of supervisors. I think it's inequitable, and it does destroy team morale when you give raises to the highest management level and not the rank and file. And at the Kerman Unified School District, while the teachers are in the classroom, we view it as a team. Because without the janitors cleaning the classrooms, without the custodians, the bus drivers bringing the kids to school, we simply can't, can't do our job. And I believe it's that same concept needs to be applied at the county. So when your frontline people, as Mr. Blong said, are happy, then everyone's happy because they're really ones that interact with the people. And for me, I place the highest regard on the simple, the rank and file people who are out there in the trenches and doing the work. And I just think it sends the wrong message, and I would be opposed to those kind of things and have a track record of doing such.
So District Four candidates, you've had a little time to think about this question. And again, evaluate the performance of the current county administrative officer and address, if you wish, this question about the raise you received. And we're going to start with Buddy.
Okay, I didn't want to just start talking. They sucked all the oxygen out of the room. But anyway, I, I think I have to just say this too, and that in, in the 20 years of public service, I've never been on a board that gave its chief executive officer a raise and did not give rank and file the same raise at any level, whether it be at school, whether it be at the bus transportation agency, or at the utility district. That never, that has never happened. That's a terrible precedent to set. But I don't want to judge Mr. Navarrete until I've worked with him. And when I've worked with him, then I'll, I'll tell you what I think about him. But I also would not accept the raise under that circumstance like that.
Danny Parra, your thoughts?
Yes, I have to agree. I, I don't know Mr. Navarrete, and I, he didn't get, I mean, he was given the raise. So the, it's on the board. I, I went to that meeting, and I spoke against that raise. Said the only reason your managers look good is for the work that the frontline employees have done. You don't lead that way, you lead by example. You should not have taken the raise, shouldn't have even been on the agenda. I also went on to say that if elected, I will do my best, I will put it on the agenda to try to get those folks back that money that they've lost, the 9%. Won't happen right off the bat, it'll have to be spread out over a couple of years. But I'm going to fight hard for them because they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Danny, stay, stay ready here. And this has been alluded to by the District One candidates, because they have to deal with the city of Fresno. But the question, really, the Farm Bureau wanted answered tonight is, what would you do specifically to end the decades-long turf war between the county and the cities? And as someone on the Fowler City Council, you deal with the county and other levels, so you have the experience to address this, and 90 seconds on this one.
Well, for one, I think Mr. Borg just tried to do a joint meeting, and I think he was just caught, being a freshman coming in and really quick, being the chairman of having his fraternity brothers back on the Fresno City Council and his new members up here, that he tried to do something, and he didn't go about it the right way. For one, shopping carts wasn't a county issue, that's a city issue. But talking with each other and collaborating is important. So the way I would do it, and the way I've done it with some committees, is you form ad hoc committees. You take two members from your council on your board, and you take two members from your city council, you put them together with your chief executive officers, would be Mr. Rudd and Mr. Navarrete, and you have them come together and discuss issues that are going to be relevant to the county and the city, whether it be infill, high-speed rail, development, sprawl, whatever it be. So at the end, when they're done, they take it back to the respective boards, they present it, and they vote it in. That way, whenever something triggers a meeting, a meeting can happen. You don't have egos bruised as far as, why am I doing this? I'm not going to look good, or whatever. It, it just happens. That's how I would have done it, and that's how I will do it.
Buddy?
Well, I'd promise a fresh start. You know, a lot of these, I think I've told Bill this story before, and I'll just tell everybody this story. This is, the trouble with this town is there's so many political vendettas, and it blows over into the city-county vendettas. And I think we need to take a fresh look, a fresh approach, and we need to realize what are we here for. We're here for all the people all the time, not just our pride. That's what we're here for, and that's, that's our job. So I think that I would, you know, collaborate with the city at all times. You could, you need to have staff talking to each other, that's, that's pretty important, but there's, you know, time factors. Sometimes, you know, the staff on both the city and the county are busy people, but we need to have either joint meetings or have actually a, a legal less than a Brown Act number, talk to each other and meet, you know, two from each, each board.
And Brian?
Bill, I think this election provides a unique opportunity. Because while we're going to lose two veteran supervisors, we're going to lose that institutional knowledge, this is going to be a real opportunity to bring two new, fresh voices onto the board. And as I've said in many debates, I come in with an, with an open mind and an open door. I don't have any preconceived notions against the city. I know them to say hi, but I'm interested in working with my colleagues on the city council, and all the cities for that matter, so that we can do what's in the best interest of all the residents of the county. I'm going to be real interested to hear what my, my opponent has to say on this, because he serves on the city council, he's been a part of the lawsuit that sued the county, and I just don't know how that makes for good relations. He's also been on, on the council that couldn't get along with the county and our SPCA, and now we have two different divisions doing the job that we were consolidated on. So I'd be real interested to see what his response is to that as well. But I think that's a big difference between my opponent and I, is I come in with a fresh new voice, no preconceived notions and open mind versus someone who's been there for a while and who's actually sued the county.
And on this one, Blong, you get some extra time because issues were raised. And also in your campaign, you've made this part of your campaign of improving relations between the city and the county, so this ought to be in your wheelhouse.
No, no, you know, when I first came in, I had that opportunity to sit on the joint powers authority, where actually the chamber put it together. And coming through there, and I saw the, I don't want to say dysfunctionality of the two entities. But, you know, when you have two groups that are in different perspective, that one group could say, we did our job, and the other one on the city side's like, I don't think we did do our job. I think that, I do agree that there is some serious institutional knowledge. And for that to happen, we need to make those changes, and we have an opportunity here. And, and I think in terms of governance and understanding the politics that's behind it, I agree. I mean, those, those communication skills needs to be addressed, needs to be looked at, so that we can move beyond the SPCA issue and the lawsuits. Because that's what relevance in terms of experience brings forth, and having to deal with both, not at the city side, but understanding the dynamics that is the county side as well. And, and I do support, you know, my, my former colleague in, in having those meetings. And here's why. We may say, well, it's more for show and tell. I'll tell you this, folks, for our folks and for our community, if the elected leaders can't even put the perception that they can talk together and make the call, we expect that from our employees and for our faith of the people to follow us? No, it doesn't work that way. We on the county and the city, whether we like it or not, understand that we're elected here to serve, to make sure that we move this community forward. And that we have to sit together and say, hi, how you doing? You know, board member, Borg just, let's get this thing on the road, let's move forward. Because that's the only way that we're going to show that we want our staff, that we want our employees, that it comes from the top on this particular issue, that we have broken those institutional barriers that have existed for so long.
Yeah, I think I speak for everybody in the audience. We would like the cities and the counties to get along, should all be on the same team. Too often, there's all this political rules, unwritten rules, like the unwritten rules of baseball. And the poor taxpayer doesn't understand these rules and just says, hey, why can't you get this done? So, Blong, here's one, and 90 seconds on it. And basically, how do you bridge the gap between agriculture and urban interests? And certainly, there's some opportunities there to bridge right now.
No, there is. And, and I don't think everybody has ever said that, you know, that I don't believe that ag is the economic engine for our community here, for our, for our county. So I want to make sure that I do everything to strengthen it, to support it. But also, I want to make sure that I understand the needs and the growth of the city. The county has an incredible responsibility here, especially what we have, like I said, overseeing 15 cities, right? With over a million people, you look at some of the ag interests, you look at the growth of the cities that we have here. The county has a great opportunity for a vision to make that happen, to make sure that the general plan reflects that, reflects that, that we want to protect our ag, we want to make sure that it continues to be the number one engine for us, but also understand that every city is growing. How do we make sure that that general plan fits that, that fits our vision and working collaboratively? Again, let me say this, working collaboratively with all the cities to say that this is a general plan that reflects our value as a county, reflects our interest, that ag is a priority for us, but also understanding where growth needs to happen and to make sure that we balance that upgrade. It's the challenge. We've been doing it for a long time. But we got to have, make sure that we have that perspective, we got to make sure that our cities are involved in the discussion, and obviously, obviously, our interest of our ag is on the table, is sitting with us, is making sure that we're looking at the blueprint that we want this county to be. Ag will always be important.
Brian, what about bridging this gap? And, you know, there is a gap there, but how do we get everybody moving in the same direction, especially now with cities and agriculture competing for water in this drought?
Well, I, I think the drought has helped to highlight that, and it showed that ag is important to every one of us here in the county and the city of Fresno, and water is affecting all of us. And we generally think of ag and just farmers, and then just recently, we started thinking, it's not only the farmers, but it's the farmworkers, but it's a lot more than that. It's the, the men and women who produce the crop and take it to the, to those markets, to the factories, and process the food, or the food and fiber that helps feed, feed the world. And in addition, it's the tax base that is generated from that. And even though you may be an ag in the county, there's a lot of city services that, that come out. Like in our business, we have uniforms for our employees, and that's all from the city folks coming out there and delivering those services. The factory's located here in Fresno that does the cleaning, so we're all, all interrelated. And in terms of the water, I think the water has shown an importance because the drought is not only affecting the people in agriculture, it's affecting the people here in the city because we all are using the same water. Ag is thought of using a lot of water, and, and it does use a lot, but it converts that water into everyone in the city uses the product. So we are, we are interrelated, we are intertwined, and we need to get along to really highlight that and promote that.
Very good. Danny Parra?
It's...
Go ahead.
Okay. It's important for us to work with ag. It is, in this county, the number one ag producer, and it does support many jobs, not just the farmworker, but all the processing plants and some of the value-added products that come out of it, too. One of the things that I have a problem with, though, is when you get into some of these developments. There's one out right now, West Lake, that they're building. It's, it's a lake, it's a huge lake. I mean, water's so important right now, but they're building this lake, it's lying, they're going to try to say it's water-neutral because they're going to shove it into a ponding basin. And you have all the farmers that are having trouble with their wells running dry, and you've got rural residents on the side there. So I just don't think it's fair to them that this is happening. And at the same time, you know, my opponent, the developer in question, has given him over $38,000, and I just don't understand how he's going to be independent and objective when it comes to this project or projects like it.
Buddy?
Well, if you're going to start that, how are you going to be independent from the unions when that's all the money you've got?
Very simple.
Well, no, I'm talking, you're not talking.
I'm getting my time right now.
Well, I mean, how are you going to show your independence? I'm, I'm the, that's not even the question here. The question is about farm, is about ag...
Bridging the gap.
And the cities. You know, and that's, that's the question, Danny, and that was a cheap shot. And I don't let people take cheap shots at me, all right? Now, who better to serve this county than a farmer that lives in a small city? I know it's unincorporated, but I know the needs of the cities, and I know the needs of the farmers. And who better to represent this county?
And Danny, you raised, you raised camp...
And Danny, you raised, uh, you raised campaign contributions and, uh, brought up the donations that Buddy received from a developer that's doing Westlake. And, uh, he shot right back at you, how are you going to be independent when you're backed by organized labor?
Yeah, labor, labor's not an issue for me because though they've given me money, they've not given me a lot. As we discussed during our panel, uh, they've pretty much gone neutral on me as you, as you know, and you've done your research. And that is what it is. I mean, I've gotten maybe what, $6,000 from SEIU. You've gotten 38,000 from this one developer, aside from what you've gotten from Harrison, who knows what else? I mean, I'm here for everyone, not just special interests, not a minority of the public. I'm here for everybody and I'm going to fight for everybody. But I just don't see how we build a lake that's just for ducks and aesthetics when we have water issues.
And Buddy, I'll let you respond because he's raised the special interests question. That's just one union, all the money that you've got, you've got in the last couple of weeks about $20,000 and was all union money, Danny?
No, I've gotten about.
No, I'm talking now. You had a chance to talk and now I'm talking. Well, that's just how this deal works. You had your chance to talk, I talked. Okay. I've received money from many, many farmers, a lot of people, not just one people. Sure, John Harris gave me money. I'm also related, we have common relatives, Danny. There's a lot of people that have given me money that I've known for over 40 years. 40 years, they know everything about me and they still wrote me big checks. And I appreciate that because that told me, yes, I do need to run because I'm a good, honest guy. Okay. We're going to deviate, uh, from the format a little bit with a specific question because , uh, Westlake came up. Um, and I'll just say that the Fresno B editorial board, uh, endorsed, uh, Westlake, looked at all the issues, said it was a plus. A lot of people have a differing opinion on that and, uh, it's been raised and, uh, let's just say 30 seconds to address, uh, the Westlake issue because it's in your district. Brian?
Yeah, that was ironic there arguing about the big project that's in our district. But, but Westlake, in, in my opinion, it's, it's gone through all the proper, uh, planning stages. It went through the, the planning commission, uh, there was public input and it's, it's satisfied all the hurdles. And at the end of the day, uh, the board of supervisors recommended the project go forward because they believe it's in the best interest of the county. It's going to provide jobs, uh, there will, will be a lake out there, a huge amount of water, but it's, it's set up to where it's a bilateral and what that means is water from that lake will bilaterally go across those fields and regenerate the underground groundwater. So, and that's how it's, um, water neutral in this race. Um, so again, because it's gone through all the planning process, uh, there was chance for public input and in the end, the public decided to move the project forward. Uh, I'm okay with that.
Okay. And, uh, we'll give you actually about a minute as it turns out on this one.
Well, let me, let me go ahead and say that the city, uh, had to approve something as well, uh, from our perspective and, and I'll support my colleague's comment here. I mean, when I came into office eight years ago, this was in the picture two years prior. So this is a 10-year process for, for, for this project to go through, uh, the level of screening that, that it has, whether I liked it or not. I said, you, you've already started the process and I will support that process and I always support the process as it goes through the many, many, many hurdles that it had gone through and answer all the issues that needed to be answered. And so at the end of the day, that, that's what we looked at, at, at what the public has finally put in there and how we gauge and what the benefits are. So I'll, I, I agree with, uh, my colleague here that it's gone through that process.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to go in a little different direction now and we're going to start with Danny Parra and, you know, we're trying to gauge the metal of the candidates. And, uh, Danny, what's the toughest decision you've had to make as a community leader?
Toughest decision as we had to make as a community leader was not, uh, our employees having to cut back their pay so that we could all stay together and not have to lay anybody off. That was one of the toughest decisions we made. Um, another one was getting rid of, uh, or losing our modification loan program that the governor took away from us because we were, uh, revamping homes, uh, up to 20,000 and even higher in some cases. So we're taking low income homes and getting rid of mold and whatever other health issues they had. So that was a tough one for me.
So why was it a tough decision?
Well, it was a tough decision for us because we were, we were working hard with our money and in the end, we wanted to spend it. Some people have spent it. We had, uh, the governor was putting down his groundwork and we were like, do we spend it or not? I mean, Steinberg has a bill right now because they went ahead and continued and it turns out that the state's not refunding them. So it was a tough decision, but it was the right decision.
Okay. Buddy? Well, actually I've never had to actually give, ask employees, public employees give backs because I was always involved in, in, uh, on boards, either school board or utility district that we had long-term planning and, uh, we didn't have to do that, but, um... Surely you've had a tough decision, something that's kept you up at night. I think those are everyday decisions, you know? I think there was tough decisions, uh, that I, we made at Southwest. We once had, uh, make a few changes there and, and, uh, let some people go and, and it was, those were tough decisions, but in the long run it, uh, everything worked out good and, and things got better, so. Brian? You know, serving a community on the board, a lot of responsibility there. Dairy Industries faced some tough times.
Yes. I, I think though, for me, one of the toughest decisions I ever had to make was one that I inherited. When I first got on the Kermit Unified School Board, there were three districts at that time in financial trouble. West Fresno was on the verge of bankruptcy and we know how that went. Fresno Unified and to my surprise, Kermit Unified was on the county watch list for financial difficulty. And just three months after elected, I had to make a vote on giving a pink slip to 82 of our 300 teachers because the district was in such bad shape. And, and to me, that was just unheard of and unconscionable that over a third of your workforce that we're going to potentially lay off because my predecessors had done such a poor job in planning and I vowed that that would never happen again. And after that vote, I can tell you, uh, we strengthened the budget and we really, really, um, I like to banter with my colleague here in District Four who has the highest reserve and I tell him the only reason he has the higher reserve is because our district built a new school, uh, two years ago and so we used our money to further our, our students' education. Uh, but because of that, we are now one of the highest reserve districts in the county. And, uh, but that was one of my toughest decisions to affect 82 people's lives and put them in uncertainty, uh, for something that, that I had inherited and I vowed to correct that and I've done that through my whole career.
Blong, your...
I, I just want to go work for Buddy because he hasn't made any tough decisions. So I, I just want, I feel pretty safe over there. You know, folks, uh, besides the seven, um, or six brutal years that the city has gone through, uh, there, there were too many tough decisions to point out, uh, you know, but, but I think the tough decisions you make, or at least for, for me that I've had personally, is really those that you have to make that are opposite of your supporters. Those that gave you money, those that came out and walked for you, those that, that called, those are the tough decisions that you have to look them in the eye and says, we're just different on this one, on this issue. And, you know, and I've did that with our labor folks that supported me, a couple of those tough decisions where I've said, I think those are internal issues and I'm not going to get involved. But I'll tell you the toughest decision for me personally. Uh, it was my second year, uh, council president and then the Mon Garden issue came up. The Mon Community Garden issue came up, very volatile, got written up all of, and here it is, your Mon Council President, sitting there making a decision on your own community, families that you know, people that you know, was Blong going to break because of his community or was he going to make the right decision for the larger community in hand? That was a tough decision when we had to go through that process, listen to the community meetings that they've had, and I've had to make the decision for what was best for the city of Fresno, even if it was against my community.
Thank you. And, you know, we've been kind of policy driven here tonight and, uh, we have time to jump onto a hot button issue here. And, uh, as luck would have it, you're up, Blong, and, uh...
Thanks.
Describe your opinion of Fresno County's marijuana ordinance and what changes, if any, would you make? And clearly they, they're fining, uh, these pot grows, $1,000 a, a plant. If you followed on TV or in the paper, uh, you know, you see fines of 300,000 and, you know, we're pretty sure the county's not going to receive much money from it.
Oh, no, this is a public safety issue. And that's why, and that's why we follow, in terms of what, that those policies were passed. I think we were different on this particular issue. Sorry. Thanks, man. I don't, I don't know, Ryan. Should I be talking with you on this issue?
If only the city and county could get along this well.
Uh, so what's my time? I'm confused now.
Oh, no, just, uh, approached marijuana grows.
All right. So, uh, so, so in terms of the larger policy, we, we in, I don't think, at the county, we, we saw that eye to eye. I think our difference is, is the implementation side of it. We allow for a 90-day period process, uh, to allow for our policy, which is similar to, to the county, to be effective. And in that 90 days, we sat around because there is a group out there that has a legitimate medical issue. There is. And so how do we work with that to make sure that we address the many needs of all of our community, to make sure that we're not putting out a small group because it is a true public safety issue? And so I sit on that committee with Member Baines and I think Olivier, uh, and meeting with those, uh, from, from the areas that, that can show, uh, that they need those, uh, medical, for medical purposes, work with our police to come up with, uh, a way that we can try to address that. Not everybody's going to be happy and I've learned that when not everybody's happy, some of us agree that's probably the best thing. And so we're hoping to get that out, but that's where I think we're similar and different on how we move things forward.
Brian, your opinion of, uh, the Fresno County's approach to, uh, medical marijuana and the marijuana grows?
Well, I think the county got, kind of got into that position because what was intended for the law, uh, there were people that were, like most things, abusing the system and we're having 20 and 40 acre groves in the county and causing a real, real public nuisance. So my position on that is I believe, I want to work with the law enforcement and go to those experts, the sheriff, the chief dyer, and see what their needs are and how, what their views are to best represent that. I think the zero tolerance might be a little bit harsh because, uh, as Blong said, there are some legitimate people with, uh, medical marijuana cards that are in pain and, and for me, I'm fortunate enough that I don't have cancer and I don't know what that real pain is. And so I don't really know, uh, what that does to them or not, you know? The only drugs that I've ever had have been by a licensed doctor, so, um, but for those people, they say that really helps and, and I just think we have to have some compassion for people and find a way to work. But my solution is working with the sheriff and chief dyer and all the law enforcement agencies, uh, because we do have to avoid those 20 and 40 acre grows.
Buddy Mendez? Yeah, this is a, is still a public safety issue and I, but, you know, I think their pro, pro whole program, I hate to use the word is growing, you know? It's, it's going to, I think they're going to have to tweak it as time goes by. I think they're still going to have to address what is the really true medical marijuana usage and where it is. And I think the really expertise is going to have to come from the law enforcement. And, uh, I actually agree with, with both of them. I think they both felt it's the same thing. So I think this is something, I think one, the, one of the bad things is, is I think the county is going to have to, um, use at least a couple of days a month to, uh, to rule over these, uh, these deals and... If you judge by what happened on Monday, they didn't make a lot of progress in five and a half hours. Exactly. So I think they're going to get tired of doing that. Danny, your thoughts on, uh, the approach to, um, medical marijuana and the problem with the marijuana grows?
Yeah, um, the bad part is again, the, the real patient that needs it. And I'm for trying to help that person in my city. We allow, uh, we don't allow dispensaries and, and that of the like, but we do allow certain amount of plants to a certain height and we do enforce it. Um, as far as the county, I understand why you need to, there's so much land out there. We had a shooting incident where a couple of parlor kids were trying to rob, uh, some guys that marijuana, uh, marijuana grow and, and one of them got killed, uh, here within the last week. So I'm, I understand where they're coming from and, and with the exception of the person that's in need, uh, I understand why they have to do what they do. It's a big hurdle, so much land out there and not many people to, uh, enforce it.
Danny, we're staying with you and, uh, 60 seconds on this one. Define what you see as the county's role, uh, with groundwater management.
Well, groundwater management unfortunately got signed into law, um, the bills and I think they needed to take more time with them to get them right, a lot more input, but they were in a rush. Again, it is a drought and they have that behind them, so I think they were able to push that through. Um, the thing is it's here. So what we need to do is we need to work with our Fresno irrigation districts, our Kings, uh, River Conservation Districts, and we need to work with them to come up with the plan. Because like I said earlier, if we do not come up with the plan in two, within two years, Sacramento's going to do it. So right now we have local control. So I like what the county did the other day in, uh, appointing Bill Larson to work with the, uh, the districts and try to implement a plan.
Buddy? Well, basically the, the county's going to have to take the lead because there are still issues of, um, permitting and land use issues that, that are going to come, come into play. But still the county doesn't have the staff, the staff and the institutional knowledge is in the irrigation districts and Fresno County is actually pretty easy to a certain extent to have, uh, KRCD do the east, except for the, up in the Orange Cove area and, uh, Westlands do the west. And then there's only a couple of other areas. Uh, in fact, Pleasant Valley actually has their own irrigation district and they could actually, um, do that, but it's going to be very costly and this is going to be years and years. It's going to be until 2040 that supposedly this all has to be in place and, and, and there's a huge fear that the law is so badly written that it's inviting lawsuits and some of these deals could be just adjudicated. Thank you. And, uh, let's go now and Brian Bacheko?
Yeah, I think that these three bills are an example of why that you shouldn't make legislation in the last five days of the session. There are a lot of loopholes, there's a lot of things that need to be clarified. Unfortunately, in the bill, they have deadlines and 2017 is the first deadline that we have to have a local agency formed. And by then, if not by 2020, the state will come in and take over. So again, I would agree with my colleague from District Four, the county board of supervisors needs to take the lead on this, but we're going to have to work with our water agencies. The Kings River Conservation District is probably the largest water district in the area. We're going to have to partner with them, Fresno Irrigation District, and we're going to have to come up with some real solutions. Um, otherwise the state's going to come in and for me, uh, on this issue this sensitive, uh, there's nothing other than local control for this issue. If we relinquish that to the state, not only the, the farmers, but all of the residents of the county will be in dire, dire need. So it's really, we get a handle on this really quick, move quickly, get our partnerships and we got to move forward. We all got to get along on this one. It's going to be more than just a county of Fresno. We're going to have to go across counties because as we know, the underground aquifer stretches across, uh, a lot of counties. It's not just Fresno's aquifer.
Thank you.
No, I, I really don't have, uh, much to add. I mean, I, I think it's pretty well stated. I, those are the positions that, that I do agree. Uh, you know, when, when you're rushed, that, that's what happens, those decisions come in. But the, the sad thing is that who has to deal with it? Us here at the local area. We have to deal with decisions that are made this day and that have missed the vetting opportunities from our, our parties, you know, whether they be our, our ag and water district or the city that's involved in this whole process because it affects all of us. And so th- those are the things that we want to make sure and, and having the county taking the leadership role, which we should, like this and healthcare and other issues, we should be in the forefront, whether having a representative, whether ad hoc committee, but making sure that we're working with all the cities, all the players in there, do the plans the best we can, but also continue to make sure that we're advocating whether that the deadlines, even those there, I think should allow for some flexibility because of how quickly these come and the issues that are still out there to be decided. And so th- those are the things and just making sure that we do what we have to do here locally.
Well, uh, we've arrived at, uh, the finale now and I'd like all the candidates to pretend that they've knocked on the door. They haven't interrupted an NFL game on a Sunday. So, and from, from the house has gotten up, answered the doorbell and, uh, give us, uh, your 90-second pitch on why people should, uh, either start marking their ballots on October 6th or go to the polls on November 4th and vote for you. And, uh, we'll start with you, Blong.
That, what's the closing two minutes?
Closing statement. Yeah, it was a long-winded way of saying closing, closing statement.
Yeah, it was a long-winded way of saying closing statement.
Two minutes, right?
90 seconds is what we're gonna do.
Well, you know, we've done many of those on the Sundays with NFL football, or Saturday with the football, college football going on, but we're here in an audience, and we've had a chance to kinda hear differences. And I tell you, folks, there is a clear difference, and we both made it. There's one that believes that there's a financial difference, and there's one that believes in the people difference. We do a lot of stuff for people on the government side because we believe that is the best thing to do, because we believe that's what moves us. We pay for a lot of things, whether it's for parks, healthcare, or our community, to say that this is what we do for our folks. If it was the bottom line, none of these stuffs would make it through. So there is a difference in that. And that's eight years of governance, six years of working for the community, fighting and advocating, making sure that government understands what they're there for. They're not there for the bottom line. Government is not there for the bottom line, folks. Make it clear. Government is for the people, making sure that all of our community, from those that have to those that don't, because that is our community here, that we have an opportunity to grow, make sure that our community is healthy and safe, make sure that we have the right plan for them. So there is a clear difference in terms of our perspective of governance, our experience in governance, and the type of support that we have cross-party lines, community organizations, from both left and right, to the middle. And I've honored and I've been appreciative of those support, and I hope that you will vote for me to be your Board of Supervisor. Thank you very much.
Well, first off, for me, Bill, is I work the district really hard, but I don't work it on Sunday. I believe that's the People's Day and the Lord's Day, so that's the one day you don't have to worry about me banging on your door. But when I do bang on that door, what I tell them is, I'm Brian Pacheco, I'm 46 years old, I'm a businessman, school trustee, and a family farmer, and I really would appreciate your support, whether you're from the county or the city. I believe I'm the best person for the job because I have a proven track record of getting things done. And while you may be from the city and my opponent may represent you, I would ask you to please look at my record and see what I've accomplished in the 20 years of my adult life. I am known for being accessible, being friendly to people, and accomplishing great things. And I would ask that you take that knowledge and compare it to my opponent, who has been on the largest city in our area for the last eight years, and ask you to compare what has he done for you over those last eight years. On the Kermin Unified School District Board, we built new schools, multipurpose rooms, new libraries. On the hospital board, we've had $300 million in construction, we've added new jobs to the community. And on the dairy board, we provided tough economic decisions in those basic times. So if you want a leader with a proven track record, working across the aisle, who has great bipartisan support, and who's more interested in getting the job done than simply being in partisan politics, then I'm your person. I would ask for your vote. And I thank you.
Okay, well, I tell them I'm Buddy Mendez, I'm 58 years old. I'm a farmer from Riverdale with many years of board experience, 20 years on a school board, 18 on a utility district board, 18 on a transportation board. I've been solving problems in Fresno County for over 20 years. I also farm in Eastside and Westside Water Districts, so I know the water deal, both Eastside and Westside. I've been endorsed by Margaret Mims. The justice system is very important to me, and I've also been endorsed by Andreas Borges, Debbie Puchigian, Phil Larson, and Judy Case, and also Devin Nunes and Valadale, and many, many farmers, Eastside and Westside both. And I would tell Farm Bureau people that some of the most influential people in the Farm Bureau over the years have endorsed me, Fred Machado, the Roland family, the Maddox family. So again, I'd appreciate your vote, and I would work really hard for you.
Danny Parra, you get something tonight that I rarely get at home, the last word.
Again, I'd like to thank the Fresno County Farm Bureau and the Fresno Bee for hosting this tonight and for all of you coming out. I've lived in the valley my whole life, and I understand ag, working in the fields when I was growing up, and now as a city official, working with my farmers in my community. I've been working for water from day one, and I will continue to do so, win or lose. As I mentioned before, six years on the council, balanced budget every year, and laid nobody off. We've worked with businesses to revitalize our downtown, bring new businesses in, and create jobs. We need to diversify our economy because we have double unemployment rate, double-digit unemployment rate, and not enough water, and who knows when we're gonna get more water. I will work with the sheriff's office, the deputy, the district attorney office, and the district, the public defender, to put away these criminals so that we stop letting them go. I'm also a veteran, so I'll make sure that we work with our veterans to help take care of them. This campaign isn't about me, it's about all of us. It's about teachers, farmers, firefighters, everyone. And if we don't work together, it's not gonna move this county forward. My name is Daniel Parra. I'm running for supervisor District Four, and I would appreciate your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
And I wanna thank everyone for coming out and learning about the candidates and participating in democracy. I know that everybody here, if they went through the hassle of parking tonight, they're the kind of people that vote. I encourage you to remind your neighbors to vote, your kids to vote. Let's get that voter participation rate up. Again, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thanks, John. Thanks.
[applause] [music][1736.15]